Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting for January 13th, 2020, our annual meeting, our organizational meeting for the year of the York County School Board. And I want to welcome to the table our three new board members. I'd like to welcome Mark Schaefer from District One, and we have Laurel Gerolds from District Three, and Shawn Myatt from District Five. And Brett Higginbotham sends his regrets he could not make it this evening, but he'll be at our next regular meeting later on this month. So we all took our oath of office last Wednesday, and we're looking forward to working together. So as we move into our organizational business, I'll ask Dr. Shandor to handle this part of the meeting. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members and staff. So this evening, I'm going to open the floor to nominations for our next board chairman.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Richardson for board chair. Okay. I now need a motion to close the nominations.
I move to close the nominations.
All right. Ms. Ford, if you'll please poll the board.
Yes, we had a motion by Mr. Myatt to nominate Mr. Richardson as board chair, and we had a motion by Mr. Schaefer to close board nomination. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wrold?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. I'd like to now open the floor for nominations for the board vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Brett Higginbotham for vice chair.
And if there's no other nominations, I'll need a motion to close the nominations for vice chair. Move to close? Second?
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Wrold and closed by Mr. Myatt to nominate Mr. Higginbotham as board vice chair. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Ms. Wrold?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
All right, well, congratulations to Mr. Higginbotham. I'll be sure to call him when we leave here tonight. So on our agenda tonight, it's a pretty short, quick agenda, but we have a need for a closed session after the end of this meeting as well. But the first is the approval of Resolution 20-01 approving the county school board organizational business for the calendar year of 2020. And hopefully, you've had the opportunity to review this document, this resolution, and the attachments prior to the meeting, but I'd like to ask the superintendent to share any comments pertaining to this resolution.
Yeah, I don't have any comments. I know that we've had a chance to have some discussions as well related to the calendar of events for the work sessions as well as the general meetings for next year. Mr. Richardson and the board have had discussions related to committee assignments.
Yes. And the committee assignments we have, and I think, have they been posted yet on our website, our new committee assignments?
Yes.
They have?
All of the documents are posted.
Great, thank you, thank you. So is there a motion in the second to approve Resolution 20-01?
I move to approve Resolution 20-01.
And I will second it, thank you. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion made by Mrs. Wrold and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution 20-1. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Ms. Wrold?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
So next, we have consideration of approval of the Virginia School Boards Association Code of Conduct for school board members, which I have the document here that all of the board members in attendance tonight have signed. And each year, the school board members sign a code of conduct, and I'll just read some of the excerpts from the code of conduct so you understand what it's about. It just says, "I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and the nation. I will attend scheduled board meetings. I will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on available facts and appropriate public input. And I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish the process for accountability of administrators." So with that, I need a motion in the second to approve the code of conduct for board members, and I'll ask Ms. Ford to poll the board afterwards.
I motion that we accept the code of conduct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
So, Mr. Myatt, did you second that?
I did.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the code of conduct for school board members. Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Ms. Wrold?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson.
Yes. Next, we have our presentations, so we'll move into those. And first is related to the expected budget, and I ask Dr. Shandor to share information on that.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have four presentations this evening. Three of them will be by our chief financial officer, Mr. Bowen, and then the last presentation is related to Goal Four, Objective Four-Dash-Six, School Board Engagement, which the board will have some discussion. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen for the first of his three presentations. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. As we head into this budget season, just wanted to kind of give the board, before I begin with the presentation, just give you an update on how the budget process kind of plays out for the school division. So in December, the governor released his biennial budget, and the state operates on a two-year biennial budget. And this year is the first year, so we're looking at FY '21, and we'll focus mainly on that tonight. But we also, in addition to the biennial budget for '21 and '22, the governor releases what's called the caboose budget bill. And these are technical updates for the current year. And so for FY '20, and this is the '20 expected budget, this is our current year. This is very sensitive. There we go. So this is the FY '20 expected budget. So there were a number of technical updates and a number of the line items. However, the net effect on our budget for this year is an additional $75,000. That's not real significant to us. I don't expect that number to end at 75 because we haven't realized what our final average daily membership is or enrollment, which ultimately determines our funding from the state. But I do like to present this information. In previous years, we have seen the expected budget change in upwards of $300,000 to $400,000, and that's more significant. And we talk about, generally talk about what those changes mean, and if they were for positions, we talk about where those positions go. But for $75,000, that additional money right now will be allocated to instruction. So if there's any questions about the FY '20 budget, okay. So let me move on to the FY '21 budget. And as I mentioned, this is the one that we're really focusing on because this is where we'll see some significant changes. So leading up to the governor's release of the biennial budget, a number of things happened in the fall, and this happens in the first year of every biennial budget. The VRS rates are updated by the Board of Trustees. The local composite index is updated by the state, and the re-benchmarking process happens. And what the re-benchmarking process is, it's a state formula, and they look at the past cost, the cost for education, how that's changed in the past four years. They look at teacher salaries, they look at benefits, they look at support costs, transportation, those kinds of things. They add an inflation factor, and then they come up with a new number for what the state should be funding K-12. So for this year, it's significant, and the state is deciding to fully fund the re-benchmarking process. So that's significant for us. So we're real happy to see that. But I wanted to run through some of the line items. The line items that we see here represent, the majority of them represent SOQ funding, and that's about 92% of all of our state funding. But I'll start with sales tax, and if you look in the third column, $182,000. So the state has recognized that the economy is doing well, they've updated the revenue forecast for sales tax, and so we'll be receiving a little more money next year coming from sales tax. And K-12 receives 1.8% of all state sales tax. Now, when the sales tax forecast goes up, the basic aid forecast goes down. So they, and then as the sales tax goes down, basic aid goes up. It's not dollar-for-dollar, but they are relational. So if you look at the basic aid, this is where a lot of the dollars from the re-benchmarking process are placed, so we're receiving an additional $4.3 million in basic aid funding. The next line item, compensation supplement, we have in our budget for this year a 5% budget increase for compensation, and that 5% goes away next year. Unfortunately, we're a little disappointed that in this economy, as strong as it is, that the governor was not, did not propose a salary increase for teachers. However, what we understand is that the governor did propose in his budget $200 million for the General Assembly to use for their priorities. So we're very hopeful that in the end, when the General Assembly finishes their work with the budget, that we will see a compensation for teachers for next year. So that $2.1 million that's going away, it ends up getting wrapped up in the re-benchmarking process. So we see some of those dollars in the basic aid line item. Two things I want to talk about, kind of highlight, and maybe sound a little bit of an alarm, and this is with the supplemental lottery, just lottery dollars in general. But we have in our budget $2.9 million in supplemental lottery in this budget for FY ' '20. And that money came to us several years ago as just, it's based on a per-people cost or per-people allocation, and basically, we can decide where we want to spend that money. So if we wanted to spend it for new teachers or new programs, we could do that. If we wanted to add it to help offset a compensation increase, we could do that. We note that in FY '21, the number goes down. We're losing about $378,000 in that line item. And the reason we're doing that is because the state is realizing that lottery dollars, the lottery forecast is decreasing. And the reason for that is because the next line item that I've highlighted, which is called game of skill. And these are dollars from casinos, the betting parlors, the off-track betting. So as these casinos have popped up, it certainly has had an impact on the lottery dollars. So the concern is, is that lottery is protected for K-12. The profits are directed to K-12 education. Right now, there's not a protection for the game of skill, those game of skill dollars. But however, what the governor has done, we've seen a loss here of $378,000. He's actually given us more than what we've lost. But long-term, this could be a problem for us, so just wanted to make you aware of that and let the, alert the community to that.
Still discretionary dollars?
Still discretionary, yes, sir. The next few line items are SOQ for special education. Our special education needs have increased, so we're receiving additional state dollars as so for vocational and textbooks. Employer shared benefits, this is the state's share of their benefit cost for our staff. So for all the SOQ-funded positions, all of our teachers and support staff, the state shares in VRS, group life, and retiree healthcare credit, and health insurance benefits, so that's their share of the increase for next year. The technology initiative, this is $544,000. It's been this way since I've been in education, the amount that they give, it's $56,000 per school, $20,000 per school, and then $56,000 for the division. So that number hasn't changed, but this is really, when technology became really the initiative in schools and they wanted to see this, this was the state's way of committing some dollars to maintain. Obviously, it doesn't come close to touching what we now, but it is some dedicated funding for technology. And then we have prevention remediation and intervention and remediation, small increase. And then there's other state funds. These are probably 15 other categories that are all wrapped up. It includes the preschool initiative, early childhood education, at-risk funding, project graduation, just a host of different line items that make up the remainder of that balance. But for next year, we're expected to receive an additional $4.6 million in state revenue. So this number is strong, we're very happy to see this. We'd love to see when the General Assembly completes their work, you know, a compensation increase for our staff for next year. Now, what's going to happen at this point is we're going to present to, we're going to continue work on our budget, and then the General Assembly has started, and they've taken the governor's budget now, and it's their opportunity to start working on their amendments. They can either change the governor's amendments, or they can, in this case, hopefully just add to it, and the governor's giving them $200 million to do so. So I think he's banking or betting that they are not going to mess with his amendments and they'll work on their own. Anyway, there are a couple of initiatives I wanted to talk about. As we looked at it, $4.6 million, some of that money is dedicated to governor's initiatives. And this is one, if we look at the proposed SOQ ratios for school counselors, the governor proposed these ratios last year, however, the General Assembly didn't adopt his ratios. So what they did adopt are the current ratios on the left. He's proposing those same ratios that he proposed last year. So what that means for us is about two additional school counselors. We're still working with instruction to identify what that actually means, could be a little more, maybe two and a half counselors. So we haven't done, completed the detailed work on that. We'll have that at the February work session when the governor, when the superintendent presents his proposed budget. Average daily membership for students, just wanted to give you a snapshot of what's happened in York County with our student growth. So in FY '18, we saw modest growth of 75, and then since then, we've seen significant growth, I would say significant growth. This is a great thing because I think it speaks to the testament of what we're doing here in York County, the staff, the teachers, and then the community itself. But this also presents a challenge for us because a number of our elementary schools, particularly in the lower end of the county, are at capacity. So while this is a great thing, and I think it does speak to the community, it does create a challenge for us, and we'll be talking about that a little later, about CIP. And then again, the next three slides is kind of a snapshot history of our revenue. So this is state revenue, and if you look at 2009, this was just prior to the bottom dropping out for K-12 and the economy and the recession. We see in 2011, we lost almost $12 million, and those were significant reductions for York County. And then since that time, we've seen gradual growth, and it wasn't until 2019 that we actually surpassed what we received in 2009. And since that time, and in between those years, we had, we did have some teacher raises, we had to add staff, we had increase in benefits, all those things, and really, it wasn't the state that was really, you know, paying its fair share, it was the locality that was having to pick up the slack on that. And so I'll talk a little bit about the local government. So in 2009, it was about $50 million, and we've seen just a small dip in 2011, but they've really seen the, picked up, you know, where the state left off. Right now, in 2019, we're $58.7 million. One thing I want to point out in 2018, if you look at the slide, it looks like we lost a little bit of local revenue. What actually happens here, in the past three years, the local government, at the end of their fiscal year, they have a fund balance, and they've been sharing their fund balance with the school division. I know of no other community that's doing that. Matter of fact, we have a fund balance, but by code, fund balances for school divisions revert back to the county. So we've asked the board, the board has asked the board of supervisors to reappropriate those dollars, and the county has been very gracious to do so. Generally, when we ask those dollars to come back to us, they're for buses, for technology, and for textbooks. Those things are operational in nature, so we include those re-appropriated dollars in our operating budget. However, what we did last year, and this was in agreement with the county, some of their fund balance that came back to us and our fund balance was dedicated more to capital. So it's not reflected in the operation budgets, that's why we saw a slight reduction, but we did see an increase in the capital budget. And these dollars right here do not reflect the additional $9 to $12 million that the county gives us on the capital side. So they fund us extremely well, we're very pleased with the relationship that we have and the funding that we get from the county. And then this is our federal revenue, and if you see in 2009, we were about $12 million, and then we almost saw about a $10 million increase in 2010. That was the infusion of the federal stimulus dollars. And that money stayed with us for a couple of years, and then it started to tail off, and then we saw a blip in 2016, and that was an increase in Impact Aid and a new DOD grant. And then again, from '18 to '19, we see an increase. And what happened in '19 is that we received $2.4 million than what our baseline is in the budget for Impact Aid. So in our budget, we have $8.5 million that we expect to get from the federal government for Impact Aid. This is revenue generated from the survey cards that parents fill out every year. I know that's an annoyance, but we rely on those survey cards, believe it or not. And so any money that we receive above $8.5 million goes to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. Now, this was an agreement that was reached between board supervisors many, many years ago and the school board to set up this rainy day fund for the school system. And this is, I will tell you from where I sit, that's a great thing because when recession hits, it can kind of tie you over until, you know, the bottom, until things level out. We can utilize those funds, it does require action from both the school board and the board of supervisors to do so. In recent years, we have, the balance is a little over $9 million. So in our discussions with the county over CIP, we've actually used $1 million to help that cash to help mitigate some of the long-term debt that the county borrows. Because if we can use cash and not use debt, then it saves the taxpayers, it saves the county, and hopefully, that money comes back to us in operational dollars, and I think it has. So it's worked out really well for us. So moving forward, we'll have a public forum on the budget at the next business meeting in January. Superintendent presents his budget on February 10th. We'll have a public hearing on the superintendent's budget on February 24th, and then by March 9th, hopefully, we'll have updates from the General Assembly. And then what happens at the General Assembly is the House will pass a version of the budget, the Senate passes their version, they send what's called crossover, the Senate sends their version to the House, the House sends their version to the Senate. And then usually, that last week of the General Assembly is when they have to come up with a final negotiated budget. And then each time they pass a budget, we get what's called a calculation tool from the Department of Education, and it tells us, it updates all those line items, sales tax, basic aid, the preschool initiatives, all those various little line items that'll update based on each house and their initiatives and priorities. So, and then by April 1st, by code, we have to have our budget approved and turned over to our county. Any questions about the FY '21 budget?
I just have one. I knew you talked about the governor's budget, the '21 budget, but we really didn't talk about the '22 budget, and I hate to ask you speculation questions, but you're the expert in this field, so what do you think about the '22 budget?
That's a good question. Typically, we don't talk about the second year because so much can happen with the economy. Dr. Shandor and I attended a conference last week, the governor was there, the state superintendent for education was there, the secretary of education was there. And one of the things, I think the common theme was, is that the state of the economy is strong, there's a lot of money out there, particularly for FY '21, but no one's really willing to talk about FY '22. Gives me a little concern about because the raise that's been proposed is in the second year. And I will tell you, if something happens in the economy, generally what happens is the raise is the first thing to go. So that's why there's a lot of push and a lot of discussion, particularly amongst superintendents and, of course, the finance folks, and I'm sure there will be with the teachers when they go to lobbying day, to ask the legislators to put in a raise for FY '21. So we'll have to wait and see really what's going to happen in '22, but no one's really talking about it.
There's a great deal of weight K through 12 in '21, that'll be something to keep an eye on too for '22, is see if that weight shifts to higher end or whatever it might be, so.
Game of skill, have you heard any chatter at all about figuring out a way to make that protected as well?
I haven't. I haven't.
That would be great to have that, to be protected, because I think that's going to be the wave of the future.
Yes.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Mr. Bowen, for sharing that information, and Dr. Shandor, would you share information on the next topic?
I will, we're going to send it right back to, actually, you're going to do your IP. So Mr. Bowen is going to sort of continue the presentation related to the FY '21 budget. He's going to talk a little bit about the CIP. Due to the transition for board members, we certainly want to provide some information to you related to all of our projects, as you'll be voting on this on the 27th. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
So because we have new board members, I did want to share this information with you again, and I provided you with copies of the superintendent's proposed document. And this is, these are the projects here on the slide. As Dr. Shandor said, the board will adopt this at the 27th meeting. But I wanted to highlight just a couple of projects that you should be aware about. Because of the student enrollment, the capacity issues that we're experiencing, a number of projects did change from our initial presentation during the facilities management, I'm sorry, facilities master plan presentation in November, to the presentation that I did in December. So first, I'll highlight the Waller Mill project. So Waller Mill, it was initially proposed to begin in FY '25 and '26. That project was moved up one year, and in doing so, we did move the new elementary school, which I'll show on the last page, shifted back a year. So typically, our plan of action has been, when we see issues or have issues with capacity, we first go to trailers or mobiles, learning cottages, and then we look at expansion projects. And then if all else fails, if we still see the capacity, then we build a building. Building a new building is very, very expensive, not only just for the cost of the construction, but also to support the staff that's needed to run the building.
We also look at rezoning, if there's a rezoning opportunity as well before we get to that point.
So in the middle school projects, what we looked at, we moved up Queens Lake Middle School here. So that was initially proposed in '24, '25, and '26, and we moved that up. And you note the theme here, this, the projects have moved up in the northern area of the county because that's where a lot of the development is happening. We're seeing a lot of development, we were actually expecting more of the growth that we've experienced to occur, to occur for the northern area, but it hasn't, it's happened in the, it's happened in the lower part of the county.
And the green numbers up there are representative of cash projects?
Yeah. So not a lot of changes on the high school side, but here we talk about, if we look at the modular classrooms. So we had for '21 and '22 initially at $200,000. Those have been increased significantly to account for the increasing growth. So that's what we'll look at first, we'll look at deploying those modulators for the next couple of years and see what growth, if we maintain that growth. And then another project that's been added, this was something new to the CIP this year, is the preschool. This idea actually came from Ms. Skinner, and we shared it with the county. The county thought it was a great idea, the problem we're having is finding available space, looking for maybe an existing building or looking for land that's available in the area that we needed. So it is quite, it's been quite a challenge to find it, but we know that there is support to fund that if and when we find the available space. And then the new elementary school, we did move out a year, so the elementary school was set to begin in FY '24 and '25, and that's been moved to '25 and '26. So any questions about the CIP?
So to be clear, on the 27th, the board will be voting for the CIP, but essentially approving FY, the column FY '21, correct?
Right, that's correct. And again, as Dr. Shandor mentioned, the numbers here in dark font there are for, it's for debt service and for borrowing. The green font there is for cash projects. And a number of that cash has come from the Revenue Stabilization Fund. Some of it has been from re-appropriated dollars at the end of the year from both the county and schools, and then some of it's coming from the Revenue Stabilization Fund. Okay.
All right, if there's no questions, we can go ahead and move forward for the last presentation. All right, Mr. Bowen, you want to take a swig of water, or are you good to go?
I think I'm good.
All right. All right, so Mr. Bowen's last presentation this evening is the strategic plan update, Goal Two, Objective Three-Dash-Three, and it's teacher compensation.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, tonight's an update on the strategic plan goal number three. If I can get my paperwork together here. So the objective of this goal is that the compensation package for licensed staff will remain in the top three of Hampton Roads' comparative market for nine divisions through FY '22. And if we look at the comparative market, these are the nine school divisions that we use, actually, eight school divisions in York County. On the right-hand side is the fall membership. So that September 30, every school division has to report what their enrollment is, and this was our enrollment, $13,084, but this is just a comparison, see how we align with other schools that we're comparing salaries to. So how we do this comparison is each school division has various pay scales. Generally, what we see is a bachelor scale, a master scale, a master's plus 30 scale, and a doctorate scale. Some school divisions do it a little differently, they have a bachelor scale, and then they'll add a supplement to that, maybe $2,500 or $3,000 per each step in the, so. per each step. And then, so for masters, it'd be bachelors plus $3,000 for the masters, and a bachelor's plus $6,000 for the doctorate. So, so what we've done here, just showing the one scale, this is the bachelor's. And so, each of those cells that are highlighted represent the school division that it's in the top three. And, if you'll notice, for York County, we don't hit that mark until step number four. And, we have four, five, and six. And then, we hit it again at eight through 16. So, we didn't meet our, our goal here. And, this is just a summary of the comparison of all of our scales. So, on, on the bachelor's scale, we have 374 licensed employees that are on the scale. And, licensed employees are teachers. This is not School Board Office, or Dr. Shandor, licensed staff. But, this, these are mainly teachers. And, we have 983 in the division. 374 of those are on the bachelor's scale. That represents 38% of our licensed employees. And, the number of steps in the top three are 12, 12 of our steps. And, that's 39% of our, of all of our steps. And then, 56% of those 374 employees fall within those 12 steps. So, 56% of our employees on the bachelor's scale are in the top three. We would like to be at 100%, but we're, we're not there. We still have some work to do, and I'll explain that in a little bit. The master scale is where most of our licensed employees are, 505, and 51% of our licensed employees. And, this is where, this is where we're lowest, at 26%. So, we certainly have some work here. And, and what's happened in, in this comparison is, prior to the recession and through the recession, we were in that top three for most of these scales. However, coming out of the recession, and when Dr. Shandor arrived, his listening tour, the teachers were telling him what they wanted to see was restored steps. And so, there was an effort to provide step, a step and a restored step. But, when you provide that restored step, we weren't providing a cost of living adjustment. And, the cost of living is the only way to move the number on each one of those steps. So, when I did this presentation last year, we, we looked at this, and we realized we, we need to change our strategy. So, we did that for this year. And, in doing so, 11% of our employees improved. But, we still have, we still have some work to do. So, at the end of, or through this process, for this year, for FY '21, if there's money available, we will certainly look to provide compensation, but also to include a cost of living adjustment, so that will continue to improve the strategy.
So, that would be the market adjust, but the division is still committed to restoring three? Is it three steps?
We, yes, we restored two out of, out of the five. So, we still have three to go. It's a, restoring steps is, is very challenging, because it's costly.
Yeah, it's significant, yeah.
And, you also have a little scale.
Yeah.
So, what other school divisions did coming out of the recession is they provided a step, a single step, and then this huge cost of living. They just, people recognizing that it's very costly to provide restored steps, and cost of living, too. And, so, new teachers that are coming in, they look at, what's that starting teacher's salary? And, if we aren't moving our step, then our, our starting salary is, is way behind. So...
We've accepted a little bit of risk there, too, on the starting salary for teachers.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So, are there any questions about, about this strategy?
Yeah.
And, that concludes my presentation this evening.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Bowen, for sharing that information. Are there any other questions of Mr. Bowen on anything he's presented this evening? All right. Well, thank you. And, next, we're going to move into our goal four objective, school board engagement. And, that's going to be me. So, in the school board engagement, our strategic plan basically says that school board members will implement, implement continuous community engagement practices through targeted intentional interactions with students, staff, parents, community members. Community engagement practices will be based on current research and professional learning opportunities at the local, state, or national level. And, we're all invited to attend state conferences, national conferences, which I know a couple of us went to the state conference last year. Also, we, we do tours of schools. We do different, there's a lot of stuff that we do as school board members. And, there's a way to capture that information. That's part of the, the issue that I think with the strategic plan, is to be able to capture the information and show that we're, we're engaged. And, we can do that in board docs. There's a place in there in the library where each individual board member has their, their name, and they can list the activities and everything they've done for the month. And then, eventually, that'll collect for the year, and that sort of thing. But, are there any other comments, concerns, questions, thoughts, or ideas, or anything on, on the engagement?
I know this is the part I'm most excited about. So, already connecting with the PTA leaders, just to kind of get
Yeah.
those things on the calendar. But, that's the part I'm most excited about.
Perfect. That's the fun part of the job.
I want to thank Dr. Shandor, too. He's, and the division, for that matter, the staff's been enabling, and give us opportunities to engage, you know, at division, inside the building. We had an opportunity over the weekend with members of the staff to engage in a community event. And, principals are reaching out. So, it's been tremendous to get us engaged as we transition in. So, we appreciate it.
Well, and I've done the committee assignments. That's my end-of-the-year chairman duties to try to assign the committees for the next year. So, they've all been done. And, that's another opportunity to engage. I think, Mr. Myatt, you're on the New Horizons Educational Center Committee. Mr. Schaefer, you're on the York Foundation for Public Education. Laurel Gerrots, you're on the Special Education Committee. I'm on the WHRO Committee. Brett Higginbotham's on the Health Advisory Committee. So, another opportunity for us to engage. But, also, when we go to those committee meetings, to put it into board docs, what we've done, that we attended. And if there's any, any handouts or anything from those meetings, you have an opportunity to send them to Sandy, or if you can scan them and put them in there. That way, we have a, a chance to look at them and see, see everything. So, we can all stay connected that way, too.
All right. Well...
Wait, wait.
Yeah. They were pulling up, there was one other slide that showed the, that showed the board docs where we could enter the...
That showed Sean Myatt's empty log.
Yes.
I want to pull up the... I think it's number three.
Pull up the third slide. Ms. Skinner? Want to open that up in presentation?
Yeah.
We're having some mouse problems tonight.
I apologize. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, this is an example of what each board member sees in their, on their page. You can see it lists the information related to the schools in your district, et cetera. But, it is a really good opportunity to, to log, you know, where you're going within your, each of your districts. I know, each of you, we've, we've had conversations. Each of you have plans on a number of events that you're going to hit in, in your communities, as well as district, district level, I don't know what that was. District level activity. We just keep going a little bit. So, so I know that you're looking forward to getting started in your work in the, in the schools. And, we're setting up some appointments so that we can get out to the schools in the next two weeks.
Okay. Good. So, are there any other questions or further discussion on that, on the engagement for board members? Okay. Well, hearing none, then I'd like to thank everyone for their presentations and updates that were provided this evening. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Our next regular meeting will be on Monday, January 27, at 7:00 PM upstairs in the boardroom. And, we're in need of a closed session before we, we adjourn.
I move the York County School Board convene in closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding a law enforcement matter and a facility matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to the exception, exemption at section 2.2-3711 A8 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
All right. Is there a second?
I second that we go in the closed session.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Ms. Ford?
Yes, and I just, I second that, Mr. Schaefer, the York County School Board to be in closed session. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Ms. Sroll?
Yes.
And, Mr. Richardson?
Yes. So, we're now in closed session. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Bowen.